You got five members?
Do you have a call-in tonight?
They're gonna get everybody, they're gonna warn everybody before they start.
You only got three members?
We're gonna be unanimous in this pass.
The brave ones came tonight. The brave ones showed up tonight. Wow, I caught those letters just today. I didn't see them before. I happened to find the sister letters. What's this all about? There's all these letters here.
Ari sits over there.
So it's a four-four. I'm just gonna make my normal announcement. Still the short boil. Good evening, everybody. Folks in the corner. Wait and sit here till 10 o'clock and then go home. Good evening, everybody. I'd like to welcome everybody to the October meeting of the Laconia zoning board of adjustments. With that, before we get started, I'd like to make a few ground rules, okay? Number one, we'll be courteous to everybody and to each other. We will not interrupt each other, and we will act accordingly as adults. Okay? If someone starts to get out of line, you will be asked to leave. And I will ask you, so I want to make that upfront, okay? Number two, if you got any cell phones and stuff turned on, please turn them on vibrate, so it will not interrupt the proceedings. Next, we have only four members tonight. So what that means for us tonight is a three-vote affirmative will pass. A two-two will fail. So I do extend the offer to any applicant at this time and this time only, because once I start, you're in, okay? So I want to make that clear upfront. So any of the applicants, you have an opportunity now to move it to the next meeting, or you will take the vote as it is given tonight. Yes?
Mr. Chairman, on behalf of the rights on Daisy Gardner Road, we'd like to defer till the next meeting then.
Very good. And thank you. Daisy Gardner Road.
Daisy Gardner Road.
We gotta find out which one now. Anybody else wish to defer to the next meeting? 476 Union Ave. You want to stay tonight? I want to hear yeses. Yes? Okay. Laconia Housing Authority.
That's Steve Smith. He's staying.
You staying?
Which Steve?
Yeah, his back's there, so.
21 Morris Ave. Are you staying?
Yes, sir. No, I would like to defer till the 20th of November.
Very good. Thank you and have a good night.
Okay. Thank you.
203 Pickrell Pond Road. You want to stay tonight and be heard, or defer to the next meeting? 203 Pickrell Pond Road. I'm sorry?
Morris Ave.
Morris Ave just left.
We're gonna stay. We're gonna stay.
Pickrell Pond's gonna stay.
No.
We have to come back on this one.
With Morris Ave and the other person we're going against is 21 Morris Ave, could he just leave?
They disagree with Morris Ave.
21 Morris Ave deferred to next month.
Yeah, but with 15 Morris Ave, we want it now.
You don't get a choice, sir.
Why? Why did he get the choice?
He's the applicant.
Huh?
He's the applicant. He gets the choice.
So it's the 20th?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Of next month. First of next month?
The 20th of next month.
20th of next.
Right, the 20th of November.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Well, I just, I have to fly up, so I just want to make sure that I'm here.
Who's staying? Okay, 203 Pickrell Pond Road. Are you staying? Are they here tonight? 203 Pickrell Pond Road. They don't get a choice then. Okay, Big Island. You're gonna stay tonight?
Yes.
Okay. Let the record indicate, all those applicants that are remaining agreed to the running of the short board. Please note that in the minutes. Okay, with that, I'm gonna go ahead and call the order, meeting to order like it's done, and we're gonna do roll call.
Roland Mayhew?
Here.
Susan Pearlie?
Here. Suzanne.
Steve Bogert?
Here.
Mike Foot?
Here.
With Ori Gibbs not present.
Okay. Next would be the minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as distributed.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Is there any discussion? There being none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes. Okay. The first application is, um, application Z-02017-0023 is 476 Union Ave. Request for a variance for density. Would the applicant please come forward at this time and introduce yourself for the record?
Hello? Yes, this is Ngatren. Okay.
So how can we help you tonight?
Yes, so I would turn, I'd like to have this property from a personal to a business, correct? Maybe you can have one of those.
Before it's a business, and now we try to turn to
A private.
Private house living.
To a single-family home?
Correct.
They want to turn it to a two-family home?
A two-family?
No.
Single? No, one family.
One.
One family.
One family.
One family.
One family.
It's, it's, it's owned commercial right now, and they want to put it back to being just a single-family home.
Yes.
Is that right?
Yes. That's right.
Then why are they here? You can do that.
Really? It doesn't say that anywhere.
Doesn't say it anywhere. Or a duplex.
It's not a duplex.
It wasn't advertised like that.
That's a one-family home, isn't it? Excuse me. That's a one-family home, isn't it?
No, it's got one unit in it already. And the top is an apartment building already. The bottom is a business, and they just want all to be, like, they want to have two units. Two units.
No. Two units, huh?
No, no, one, one.
One unit?
One unit.
One unit?
Uh, before it's a two-unit, and down one, and up there is business. And now we want to turn.
You want to turn the whole building into a single-family home?
Correct.
You're not gonna rent any part of it? You're gonna live in the whole building?
The top building is, is live there. It's not, not separate. It is, it's one. On the top is one. Before it's a one business, and now it's, we turn to the, the living, not, not separate.
You might have moved now?
Okay. So you would live downstairs also as a single-family?
Down there, they're already, they're already there before. We don't do anything down there. But top is a business, and now we want to turn to the living.
So that you can live in both sections?
No, no, no. Um, down there, before, they separate. It's not together. And down there, we don't touch it. And up there, now, we want to live there. We, no business there. And one, one person, one, one family only, on the top.
Just your family?
And what happens in the rest of the building?
And the rest building is before, it's like that already. So before the separate, is that before, is a two-unit before. And now still two units. Down there, one, one family live, it's separate. And up there is business. Everything is separate, and not together. And now we turn, we want to turn from business to the living.
For one family?
It looks to me like there's two families living in that house. There's two different generations there. Do you mind if I ask a question?
Yep, go ahead.
Looks to me like there's two generations of people living there. There's an older couple and a younger couple. Do they each have their own apartment? Or is it one apartment where they all live there together?
Oh, no, separate.
Two apartments?
Yeah, they all have a, they have a separate, not together.
Two units, and because the lot is so small, they need a, they need a variance to have two units on that small, that size lot.
Did they need any kind of a variance or anything? Excuse me. They need anything to turn that back? That was an office building for many years. To turn it back into a residential home, do they need a special exception or a variance for that?
Only one.
Duplex is permitted in that zone.
It is.
But it's, it's a maximum of six units per acre. They only have... What does it say here? It's a very small lot, so therefore, they, in order to have two units, they need
Looks like they've already done it, to me.
They need a variance. Well. But to make it legal, they need a variance to have two units on this lot because of the size of the lot.
And I, I totally understand that, but the way this was presented to us is that they wanted to change it from commercial to residential, and that's why they were here, so.
It has been a struggle understanding what the applicant wants.
I can imagine.
So is, is it okay if we proceed, or does it need to be renewed?
I don't think we can vote on this.
I think by all indication, it was advertised as going from for a, a single unit, not a duplex.
It's not.
Right. So.
No, it's, it's.
It was posted in the agenda as a variance for density, which is what the, what the variance is for, is for the density.
Density of the living areas on it, how are they, how was it for parking?
They have a...
They have a parking lot already on.
Yeah.
Oh, it's a parking? Cause it was a business.
And back in front too.
They're just turning that business back into a residential unit.
So really, it doesn't have anything to do with it being a multifamily or a business and an apartment. It's the density. Cause you can live in commercial.
But they said that they were...
And it was advertised as density.
But they said that they were trying to get a loan, and the reason they couldn't get a loan was because the building is, is commercial use. And so they were coming to us to change the use to residential. That's what this says. Am I wrong?
No. But it's still in the commercial zone?
Still in the commercial zone.
No, no more.
So we're doing two things then?
The end.
What are we doing?
If they had a larger lot, we could administratively, administratively change the use. They don't have a larger lot. They can't have two units on this lot, because the lot does not support two units.
Okay, but I'm just saying that.
So that's the density, and that's what was advertised.
And it's not a parking problem. It's a building problem.
Excuse me?
Density problem.
Density problem.
Excuse me?
Yes.
Now, we don't do anything different. There was, down there is one separate family. And up there is a business, but it's separate. It's not together at all. And now, all down there, we don't do anything. Up, up there, we don't do anything either. And now we want to change the business to personal house.
So you own the building?
Yes.
And you have the tenant?
Yes.
You have a tenant right now in the building?
Yes.
And are you gonna live there?
Yeah, we try to live there, yeah. But we want to change to a, from, before it's a business, and now we, no business. We live there. We try to live there, so.
No, I understand the business is gone. I totally understand.
Yeah.
I just want to do the right thing.
But you can still... If you could have a business in an apartment there, you can't have two apartments?
They don't want a business.
I know, I understand that. I, I, I see where you're going. You're trying to make the correlation between a business and residence. It's the same density, is what you're trying to indicate. But one, a business is a temporary use of the property, and the other one's a permanent use of the property. Temporary, as in people not residing there on a permanent basis. Versus the other one is someone's gonna be there permanent, even though it's a, an apartment. Did that make sense? Yep. So it comes back to density. And it was advertised for density, so does that...
Now, since they've already moved in with the tenants, if we decide tonight that we're not going to allow this special exception to take place, this variance to take place, what do they have to do to the property so it becomes a one-unit apartment house? One, one-unit residence? Do they have to rip out one of the kitchens?
You would imagine.
We, we will work with the applicant, one way or another. Get this to be conforming, either they come back here or something else.
Because we passed these rules, and we...
If the lot was a little bit bigger, they wouldn't be here.
You mean to change the use from commercial to residential? I mean, is that...
Correct. Because they're making, they're making it a duplex. They're making it a two-family.
Not a one.
Not a one. Before, it was a, a mixed use, which is another category in our, and that's, that's a whole different situation. So the fact that they're going to two-family, they need to have a third of an acre. They don't have a third of an acre.
And is the building itself large enough to contain two reasonable-sized apartments?
Yeah.
I mean, I don't doubt, I don't have a problem with it. I just, I'm just so confused by the application.
I don't know what we're voting on.
Me either.
Voting on density.
I'm not gonna vote till I find out.
Voting on density. Allowing, basically allowing two residential units on a lot that's less than a third of an acre.
Excuse me?
Yes. Yes.
We got the tenants. She lived there like 30 years already. For herself, in the tenants. And up there, no business, separate completely. It's not together. And now we be there, we want to, you know, no business and live there. So they totally separate. We don't do anything at all. We don't fit. We don't separate anything. But they're already separate before.
Right. Okay.
All right, so now I'm confused. What do you... Okay, on, on one hand, I hear, I'm hearing, and I'm really, got my ears open here, that we're going for a two-unit. I understand the business isn't there anymore, and it could be sections of the same family living in one building. Really, it's just a density. If I look at this cleanly, it's just a density question. That's, that's what I understand. It's a... It doesn't matter if it's two units. It can be changed from commercial to, to unit administratively. Okay, because the way the zoning is set up for that, if they can do it without coming to us. Where the problem comes in is the lot is not large enough. So that's why they're here for density, not use. Right. Point 2.4 vice point 3.3? Well, we haven't even talked about green space. It's not gonna have any more or less green space.
I know.
It's all pavement right now anyway, so.
Right.
So I guess the question before us is the density. Yeah, I, I can see that. I can see that vision. Not the fact that it's going from a commercial business to a duplex. Just density. Just density. Perfect. Okay. I'm gonna hold that thought for a minute. I'm gonna go ahead and open it up to the public and ask if anybody from the public was to speak for or against this application. Please come forward at this time and introduce yourself for the record. Please let her speak.
Good evening. My name is Patty Rice. I am the abutter to this property, and I wholeheartedly support this application. These people are very kind, very nice. The tenants are wonderful. We've lived in our, our home for 27 years. And Bonnie next door is wonderful, and the new tenants, Robin and Gary, are great. So we have absolutely no reason not to do this for these people. Thank you.
Thank you. Would there be anybody else that wished to speak for or against this application? Please come forward at this time. Let the record indicate, no one else from the public wished to speak for or against this application. I bring it back. Any further questions? Nope? Any closing comments?
We'd like to thank you for your time today, and we'd like to also respect your decision, and thank you.
Thank you. Y'all may have a seat. With that, I'm gonna close it to the public and bring it to the board for discussion. We're all pretty much set on it.
Yeah.
Okay, like to entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve application 2017-23-476 Union Ave. The application is to, to transform a, a, a building that has been mixed-use, commercial and residential, back to, to residential units. And the reason for the request is that the property is located on an undersized lot. The, granting the variance would not be contrary to the public interest, and the spirit of ordinance would be observed. This is an allowed use in that district. They're not changing the building or anything on the exterior of the building, and they're not enlarging the building or in any way encroaching on more of the land on that lot. The, granting the variance would do substantial justice. Again, it's consistent with the area's current use and character. Will do no harm to the general public. Values of surrounding properties will not be diminished. And unnecessary hardship, the hardship exists due to the fact that this building's just, it's been there historically on this undersized lot, and it's been used partially residential, and we're just allowing the use to continue. There's no other, you know, if there's no commercial, there's no commercial use involved. It's just a, a single-family, I mean, up, a, a, a residential use, two, two-unit use. There's no benefit to the neighborhood in, in denying this application.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second? I second that. We have a second discussion of the motion. There being none, all those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Okay, passes 4-0. You're good to go.
Thank you.
They'll talk with you later. Okay? Okay. Application Z-02017-0025-423, South Main Street. Request for a variance for density. Would applicant please come forward? Introduce yourself for the record.
Steve Smith, Steve Smith and Associates, representing the owner and applicant.
Just a second. Yes, could you repeat that number on the application?
It's right here. It's on the agenda.
2017.
Okay, go ahead.
Good? Please continue. Thank you.
For the record again, Steve Smith of Steve Smith and Associates, representing the owner and applicant on this project. We'd like to request an extension from this board to the November meeting to be heard with the full board.
You weren't in the room when I made the announcement. We'll go ahead and honor that and put that on, because we had already assumed you were here when I made the announcement at the beginning of the meeting.
What was the announcement? I was out in the hall room.
Right, that's what... We gave everybody the opportunity to move on at that time.
Well, I, I had to confer with my client, so I...
I don't think anybody on the board's gonna argue.
Thank you.
See you next month. Okay, so that was for the building on the corner of South Main and Union. And if anybody's here for that one, it's been moved to the next meeting.
Morris Ave.
Okay.
Morris Ave has been moved.
Morris Ave?
Yeah, they're gone.
Oh, that's right, that's gone. 536 School Street.
The next one, Morris Avenue's been moved next month. Thirty-six School Street. I don't have anything on Thirty-six School Street.
Yes, it's the accessory dwelling unit.
School Street. I understand, I still don't have anything on School Street. So we have an extra package.
I made an extra package just in case.
Just in case. Okay, we're gonna go ahead and do School Street, Thirty-six School Street. Application two-zero-one-seven-0027. Would applicant please come forward, introduce yourself for the record, and tell us how we can help you.
Hi, I'm Casey LaSalle, Thirty-six School Street. And I bought this house in 2015 as a foreclosure, with the original intent of having in-laws move into a garage that was converted into an apartment. The garage apartment was never officially permitted, so I'm just here to clean up the paperwork, so I can get that up and running. There's frozen pipes that I have to fix, and I'd like to get in there, make an affordable housing, either for my brother or someone who's trying to, you know, find an easy place to live. Kinda help out the neighborhood, build it up a little bit.
Now, you said the accessory units for your relative, your...
It was originally intended for my in-laws, that's no longer a situation. So now I hope to have the accessory unit be either available to one of my younger brothers or a close friend, or someone who's young and trying to get their feet on the ground.
Just so, just to refresh everybody's memory, about a year, February of 2017, we rewrote the accessory dwelling unit chapter of the zoning ordinance, and it's, doesn't say it on the application, but it's actually two-thirty-five thirteen, is that what it is? And section two-thirty-five, that was definitions, two-thirty-five forty-one, residential accessory uses. So this is totally allowed. And we did accommodate for these units in garages. And I read through the law, and it seems to comply, you know, with everything that is in the new law.
With the intent of the new law.
Right.
And it's attached to the house?
No.
No, it's not.
It's a detached unit.
Yeah, it's a separate garage.
With a small apartment, it's three-hundred and something square feet?
Yeah, interior is...
More than three-hundred.
Interior is three-fifty, if you go by the outside, it's three-ninety-nine.
Is it on the first or the second floor?
It's on the first.
And what's on the second floor?
Nothing.
And you're not gonna be expanding it or anything?
No, just put some insulation in there.
Straightforward, it meets the code.
Pass muster?
Yes.
Okay, any further questions? With that, I'd like to open it up to the public and ask if anybody from the public wishes to speak for or against this application. Please come forward at this time and introduce yourself for the record.
Hello, I'm Don LaSalle, it's good to see you again. Hi, I just wanna support my son in rebuilding this house. He bought it with the intent of his in-laws moving in, but that's not a situation at this point. The garage, from appearance outside, it appears to be an apartment already. It was apparently put in, I don't know if it was ever really put into service, it was intended to put it into service and renovated for an apartment, but it was never permitted by the city. So he's basically wants to make that right, turn it into an accessory apartment, invest it to, into it, and make it more valuable, and provide an affordable housing for, whether it be relatives or young professionals maybe that are living in the area, in the neighborhood. And I just wanna point out, it's consistent with the master plan as far as providing affordable housing and neighborhood atmosphere. And I think you went through the special, I think it complies with all the special exemption requirements. This parking is fully, very adequate parking, more parking than what is necessary area for parking.
It's great for shoveling.
Great for shoveling, yeah. And that's it, I just...
That it would be subsidiary in size and height to the primary structure, which it is.
Yes.
Looks like the primary structure.
Yeah, and it's no change, no change in appearance would occur from what it is now. It already looks that way, it was converted from a garage, so. It's been that way for, I don't know, could be ten, fifteen years, I don't know. So, just wanna support that.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else from the public wishes to speak for or against this application? Please come forward at this time and introduce yourself for the record. Let the record indicate no one else from the public wishes to speak for or against this application. Therefore, I'll bring it back to the board for any other questions. There, yes?
Just a comment, the, we don't have a record of this unit being created, so the applicant will need to, if this is approved, they will need to come in for an after-the-fact building permit, which is fine, I just wanna put that on the record.
Okay. Any other questions? There being none, any closing comments?
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. With that, I'm gonna close it to the public and bring it to the board for discussion. Meets state law, and the zoning was just... State law, plus the fact that the city taxed that property for several years, with two units. So I don't see any reason. Okay, with that, like to entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion, we accept application 2017-20027-36, School Street, Casey LaSalle. I'll look at first special exemption from Article two-thirty-five and H-two Table one. This, to change a garage into a living apartment, something that previously had been done, or at least started. The use is authorized, will not create undue traffic congestion, or impair pedestrian safety. I don't see that will overload any public water drainage or sewer system or other municipal system. And there should not be any increase in stormwater runoff, being as the building is already there. The request will not create excessive demand for police, fire, schools, or solid waste disposal. And special provisions for the use are fulfilled, this is state law, along with our vision in our master plan. The requested use will not create hazards to health, safety, and general welfare of the public, nor be detrimental to the use or out of character with the adjacent neighborhood. The location is appropriate for the requested use, being as it's there. The requested use is consistent with the intent of this chapter and the master plan.
Second? We have a motion, we have a second, and I'd like to add one addition to that, that it must be permitted in all the, brought up to the dates to the current standards that are applicable for this type of dwelling.
So move.
Okay. Is that acceptable?
Acceptable.
Okay, with that, all those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Okay, it passes. Thank you. One-forty-five Daisy Garner Road was moved to next month. We're moving down to, looks like, I keep trying to push it, two-oh-three Pickle Pond Road. Applicant please come forward. Okay, that is applicant number two-zero-one-seven-0030, big, no, I'm sorry. Two-zero-one-seven-0029, two-oh-three Pickle Pond Road. Request for a special exception for the use of the property for a trade school vocational school. Please introduce yourself, tell us how we can help you.
Brian Patterson, and we're hoping to set up this school so that we can teach small classes and for profit. And so we're both naturopathic doctors, and I have various skills to offer to teach classes in the community, and would like a chance to do that.
And I'm Catherine Cranford, also living at the property, and would be teaching some of the classes as well. I think that they were outlined in the application.
Is the building currently built?
Yes.
Yes.
It's their home.
It's their home.
We have a home and a separate building that's an office building.
I'm sort of, I have to admit, I didn't get out to look at your property, but I did a Google Earth once, and I got a picture of one building, and then I got another Google Earth that had two buildings on the property. Are there two buildings, or one building on the property?
There are two buildings now, so we recently built an additional office building that was, got our certificate of occupancy on February tenth.
So, and what is that building used for?
Our offices.
Oh, so there's a business operating in there right now?
Correct.
Okay, and so where do you live?
We live in the round building, the offices are the rectangular building.
Oh, okay.
I thought it was just the opposite.
So where do you plan to have this vocational school?
So, we'd like the opportunity to teach the classes where it's convenient, either in the, in our home, or in the business, or possibly in the garden, or out on the land, depending on what the class is.
Would it entail building another building?
No.
No.
Are these buildings to the north here, off the octagonal building, are those already built?
The, there's a proposed garage that is not built. The other building is built. So I just took the plot from our previous application.
It says proposed, so we don't know, you know.
I apologize, so I took, I was, I took the plot plan from our previous application last fall, and the building, that rectangular building that has been built. So that was approved and built.
But the, so the round building, it says proposed for bedroom residence, that's not...
That is the current home that's there, that's not proposed, I think...
The plot plan that we looked at, we took from the previous plan, and I should've crossed out proposed.
Yeah, 'cause that house has been there for...
Two thousand eight, we finished that, so...
Been there for quite a while.
Yeah, so I apologize for not crossing out the proposed.
Now, the square in between the round building and the rectangle building is a square?
That is a possible future garage plot.
Okay, so that's not there, so there's nothing adjoining the two buildings?
Correct.
Okay.
And I'm gonna jump right in, so north of this, again, this rectangular building that has a bump out on the front of it, that says proposed, that's already there?
That's correct.
So what is the use that's on the lot now?
It's just an extension of what we're already doing to allow us to teach classes and charge for them.
Yeah, but what is the approved use on the lot right now?
It's a home business.
So it's real residential, the current use is as a campground, but the, we have fifty-nine acres, and it's, we have the residential home and a home office.
You're running a business, right now?
We have a home office, yes.
And what is it that you're, so you're approved for a home office, for a...
That's allowed within the rural residential, but according to that, we're only allowed to serve two people at a time. If we're teaching classes, we would be having more than two customers at a time, so we need an exception in order to charge for.
And what is the, is there, is there an active campground on this site?
No.
You said campground.
I said current use, that's what, you asked what the land is approved for at the moment, and that's what it's...
It has been for a long time, and that's not our plan.
If it hasn't been used, it's probably already dropped off as a use, 'cause you've gotta do something within one or two years.
I'm just saying what it's in current use as, but I don't...
We're not aware of any campground use, so I...
Okay.
There's no campground.
So that one's rolled off. Okay.
Well, I don't know that.
No, we don't.
I'm saying, we're not aware of any campground use, whether it's being used as a campground or not.
It is not, I can confirm that.
How long has it not been used as a campground?
For as long as I've owned it.
It is not a campground.
For the property.
And you own a total of how many, close to sixty acres there?
Yes.
And this school is day use, or night use, or day and night?
It could be either, we would be doing plant identification walks, we might do a moonlight cross-country ski, plant identification ski, or teaching in the gardens about how to tincture plants into medicines. We might do astrological identification of stars at night. These are all very quiet and small sort of classes that would go along with the naturopathic approach to medicine that we're already doing.
And there's no overnighting on the property?
No.
And how many, what would you think would be, in your mind's eye, a maximum number of students you would have at one time?
I put in there less than twenty-five is what we're targeting.
Most likely half of that most of the time.
Most of the time, less than half that.
Is the proposed drive, I see two pictures here, is this one in actuality? Or, and how much parking does it provide for your students?
So, I tried to draw on there the approximate size of the, the shape of the area that has been set up as hard-packed and would support cars well, as opposed to, but...
What's the distance between, from Pickle Pond Road to your house?
Think it may actually be marked on there, it's a...
I'd say pretty close to a thousand feet, isn't it?
So that...
No, it's about a hundred twenty.
Hundred and twenty feet?
Yeah.
Further than that?
I think it's further than that.
The rectangular building is forty feet, if you want some scale, on the long dimension. It's sixteen by forty.
What I'm getting at is, you don't have a problem with parking. I have sixty acres.
No, when we've had gatherings at our...
I don't know what sixty acres are.
When we've had gatherings at our house that don't have anything to do with classes, people just park in that way, and there's not been any difficulty with that. And there's, when you come in, there's a turnaround and back out, so works pretty well.
Yeah.
So you won't be serving food, or having restaurant-type meals, or anything like that? Strictly for small classes and educational purposes only?
Exactly. Exactly.
Would there need to be a formal parking plan, there are further things needed from planning on this, if it was moved in that direction?
I think they would have to do a minor site plan.
A minor, and that would be internal, not? Okay.
Is this on a septic, I'm sorry?
I just was wanting to make sure it got reviewed by.
They're not on, it says in there, they're not on city or, they're not on city septic?
They're not, or city sewer, so this is their own. Will the septic allow, if it's been there for 25 years, a increase of usage?
The septic was put in in 2007, so I don't foresee any issue with that. We oversized it, so.
Something like this, do you, when you do a site plan, do they have to have so many bathrooms or whatever, I mean, it's?
In this case, we'd be looking for parking, formalized parking plan, but.
Okay, any other questions at the moment? There being none, I'd like to open it up to the public and ask if anybody from the public would speak for or against this application. Please come forward at this time and introduce yourself for the record.
Jeanette Buckley and neighbors of theirs that live very close by.
And I'm Linda Golden, we own a camp next door, we're just concerned what this is going to bring into the area, because it is a country and residential area and we'd like to keep it that way, that's all. So we just wanted to know exactly what's going on and we're just concerned.
Now, did they explain well enough to you to what would be going on? Or do you still have some?
Well, I'm just concerned if this is going to open up a can of worms and other people are going to start doing this.
What way would you, just looking at this?
Yeah.
What kind of can of worms are you looking for? Because I'm trying to nail down what the actual concern is versus, I'm not sure what it is, so.
Okay, what I'm trying to say is, it is a growing neighborhood and we don't want other people coming in and thinking, because this neighbor has this, that they can do it too. And, you know, we like it rural and we like it country and we don't want to bring any more in than we can, you know?
Yes ma'am.
That's basically.
I don't know if anybody's ever explained, but each property in itself has to be able to defend its, what it's requesting and stuff.
Mm-hmm.
They must stand alone on that variance in this case. So if, if, not saying it would be, but if it was approved in any neighborhood and someone else just can't walk in and say, oh, you did it here, I deserve the right, doesn't work that way. Each property by itself has to be able to meet the criteria.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so it's not just, okay, now everybody can open a school.
Yeah, okay.
So, they would have to go through and come to the board, they would have to ask, they'd have to make sure all the questions that are there for them to fill out are done and appropriate and then it's reviewed, so, okay?
All right.
Does that help you some?
Yes.
Didn't quite understand how many people that you would be doing at one time.
So, we put in there less than 25 at a class and occasional classes, not regular.
Most likely half of that.
Most, most of the time it would be less than half that, so we might have a dozen people there.
So this is the camp right down on the water?
Right.
Yeah, much quieter than your gatherings have been, for sure. No music, no big rowdy anything. We don't want that either.
Okay, can we bring it back this way?
I knew they'd want to throw that.
So.
Yeah.
Did we, that could be a good sized party for anybody, 25 people.
Mm-hmm.
But if it's less than that, then you got a little social gathering, okay? Did that kind of make you feel any warmer and fuzzier or no?
Not really.
Okay. All right, but you do understand what's gonna, what, what, what they're asking for and how the zoning works on something like this, that not just anybody can come in?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you much.
Okay.
Is there anybody else from the public which speak for or against this application? Please come forward at this time and introduce yourself for the record. Let the record indicate no one else from the public wishes to speak for or against this application, therefore I'm going to bring it back to the board for any last questions.
I got a question. When we're talking vocational and trade here, which is what it says, there's no definition of what vocation and trade is, and I'm just curious, you know, is this the blacksmith shop, are we building gongs, or is it wood turning, or is it more plant identification? When we just say trade, there's a lot of other trades, are we building a welding shop?
Well, we can specify the trade that this is being, if it does go forward in that direction, we can specify and kind of narrow that window down.
Well then we ought to, we ought to ask the applicant to define in a few words what their school is.
So, I think of, I have two things that I come to mind for me, one is that I'm a naturopathic doctor and another is that I have a master's in environmental education, so those would be the two areas that I would be thinking about teaching in.
Okay.
So I don't know if it, if it is helpful to define our aim, the fact that it's called a school or a vocation or a trade is the city's wording, not ours, and we just want to teach some quiet classes on the property that have to do with the natural environment and people taking care of themselves. So I think that with that, and I don't see this as a party, it's a, it's a teaching environment, so.
No, I think what, with all of these, variance travels with the property, okay? And what happens is when it's done and if you decide to move on to greener passengers in another town, that still stays with the property.
Yes.
So, and what my colleague here is discussing is, all of a sudden, it's a school that will teach automotive or junking cars or, or any abstract thing that can come up, because that's how open and wide it is, if I'm not mistaken, correct? So what we try to do is define it down to what you're actually trying to accomplish and then we can see if we can move in that direction. Is that pretty much covered, that's why we're asking to kind of?
Did that answer your question?
I don't know, is that something we can?
In their application, they're asking for natural health, therapeutic massage techniques, herbal medicine and similar areas, and I think if you use that wording, that we're good, that excludes blacksmith shops and all that other stuff, so.
Steel drums.
Okay. Okay. So, any other questions? Any closing comments?
Thank you for your time.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
With that, I'm going to close it to the public and bring it to the board for discussion.
On the face, it seems innocent enough.
Yep. Okay, like, since there's no other discussion, I'd like to entertain a motion.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve application 2017-29-203-Pickle-Pond-Road. The applicant is applying for use to teach occasional small classes and in topics that are related to natural health, therapeutic massage techniques, herbal medicine and similar areas of interest. The attendance and class sizes would be no more than 25 at any one given time. Use is specifically authorized in this chapter by a special exception. The requested use will not create undue traffic congestion or underly impair pedestrian safety. It's located on a very large lot in a rural section of the city. The requested use will not overload any public water drainage sewer system or municipal system. They're not tied into any municipal systems on this property and there will be no significant increase in stormwater runoff into adjacent properties or streets. Requested use will not create demand for municipal, additional demand for police, fire protection schools or solid waste disposal services. There are no special provisions. Requested use will not create hazards to the health, safety, general welfare of the public, cannot be detrimental to the use or out of character with the adjacent neighborhood. The proposed location is appropriate for the requested use as they are already offering similar services as a home-based business. The requested use is consistent with the spirit and intent of this chapter.
Okay, we have a motion? Aye, second. We have a second? I did it myself. Any discussion of the motion? There being none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, passes. Okay. Application. Ouch, that staple keeps getting me. Application 2017-0030, Big Island, Pogus Bay. Request a special exception for the use of the property for a conference center. Would the applicant come forward, introduce yourself for the record and tell us how we can help you, please?
Thank you. I'm Rosie Dennett, the planning consultant for the applicant, New Hampshire Big Island Company. We have a number of people here and we also have some boards we'd like to put up on an ESOL, if you'd give us a few minutes to do that real quick?
Please take that.
Okay, thank you.
Can we move the board so that the audience can see that?
Yep.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Would it be possible to take a moment while they're setting up?
Yes, we're going to take a adjourn, just for a few minutes while y'all are setting up. Take a break real quick.
We don't see anything here that specifies other than the owner to speak on behalf of this project.
Is the owner here?
I don't think so, no.
We didn't get anything.
Doesn't specify that anybody can speak on behalf.
We have, we have, we have something on the record from, they got the condition.
Yeah, but that's not this.
I know they have it.
You can ask her if she has.
I was sure there was.
I mean, you know, like Steve Smith, there was all letters from everybody.
Yep. Do you have a letter or something that's given you the authorization to speak for the owner of the island?
There's NTC, you can take that.
Is he the owner?
Yes, he's, he's the brother.
It's the person who owns it. Because the brother can't sign for you. He can't say whatever he wishes, but the owner is responsible, so that's why. He just didn't authorize anybody else.
Can I get him on the phone, or is that not? He couldn't be.
Right. We don't normally do things by phone, hopefully we have no way of verifying who's who. Yeah, because it gets, if something goes sideways, then they can use that, unauthorized, like all kinds of things.
Is this the only, this is the last item? So we couldn't get into that sometimes? While you were considering something else or while we're doing the proposal?
Well, we can't even open it, that's my only problem, is I can't open it without the authorization being done. Like all the other applicants, I get a letter or something else is going to do the presenting and so.
I say, I know we had one for the conditioning issue, but that's why, I guess that's why we didn't ask for another one.
Yeah, I just want that person to come out, yeah, because he's paying a small fortune first. And I don't want to waste people's time, you know, the neighbors.
I do apologize, I just.
Well, I didn't understand. I thought it was just for the application.
Well, this is the application.
Right. We're presenting the application, so even though he signed it.
Where he signed didn't say any agents.
This is the city council meeting.
Look at this.
This is Tim James, he's the son's brother. Saying that because the application was signed by, he didn't designate any agency.
He didn't actually designate anybody to speak.
Just want me to get him on the phone?
Yes.
I want to have him send an email. Yeah, I could send him a letter right now, two minutes.
We're in adjournment, we'll take. Single family. Okay, and then we'll make a determination there and then come back and decide.
Try to get something from him.
I can have him send something right now, he can scan any letter and email here in two minutes.
They had a transfer offering, they said it was for a single family home.
See, once again, there's no way to verify it's him. That's my point, that I gotta have something that says it's him and I haven't done.
Well, even if he signs this, it's the same, yeah. You don't know that he signed it.
This is our lawyer, Congressman.
I'm just saying, without authorization, I have nothing.
I'm just saying that Tim, I think, has a good point, which is that if you get a letter or email today and within the next two minutes while you guys are meeting, I might just resolve it completely, because whether we show up.
You can go ahead and try it and we're going to go over there and we'll talk.
Could I get an email addressed from you or should I have sent that to me and then I can show you the letter? I can show you the letter?
Send it to Dean?
Send it to him, thanks. Okay? Thank you.
Folks, we're gonna adjourn for a minute and go in the back room real quick. You wanna vote?
Hmm? Stay, stay.
Do we?
Yes.
Do we have to vote to go in a non-public session?
So you have to come out of the adjournment.
Okay.
I'd rather you did it in public, Steve. Just let me do the deliberation in public. Explain the situation and deliver it public.
I don't have a problem doing it front of everybody.
Okay. All right, I'm gonna bring the meeting back to order, please. Okay, now that we're back in order, it came. It came to our attention that a authorization for the agents to do the speaking for the owner has not been presented, and we're discussing there, trying to get an authorization email sent now so that the proceedings can go, if that works for the board. And so that's why I wanted to talk, to make sure that that's good, an email being sent to Dean from the owner, authorizing the appropriate people to do the speaking tonight. Would that be acceptable?
Well, for the, for the, for the previous.
No, not from the previous, they're gonna do it right now.
I know, but I'm just saying for the previous applicants, there were signed letters, you know, authorizing their representatives to act on their behalf.
Right.
That's not in this packet.
That's correct.
And so this won't be assigned, it'll just be an email, and how do we know who's sending the email?
Well, you're right, and that's the, one of the points I brought up, and the other point is, they brought up in this quaint discussion real quick, was, how do we know he signed that, this paper? So, in theory, I don't have an answer, because we don't know actually who signs who, so... But, an email, and if that's acceptable by the board, then we can continue. Yes?
I don't have a problem with an email coming in, allowing these people to speak. I think we've got probably one of the best crowds I've ever seen in the City Hall building tonight, and I'd like to see this resolved tonight.
As long as there's appropriate purifications, and one would tell me that it came from where we'd expect it to.
I agree, all these people are here, so it'd be unfortunate to send everybody home.
So that would be work with you. Dean went to get the email, and he'll bring a copy of it back up, okay? Until then, we're gonna take another adjournment, while we patiently wait for a few minutes.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Yes.
Taking the last cup, does anybody want it?
I saved it for you. I looked at it and I was cowboy.
The existing house right here, this is what's there now, the existing house, this is the existing dog. They wanna add these dogs.
I don't know, we needed to change the battery in the clock, so we got a digital clock. Now we'll get crystal wear.
Washing system, transformer, turning it into a camp. Yeah, that's what I. Well, yeah, balloons are right here. My mom and me saw a little eagle on the rocks all year, just the other week. And not to mention, like, we have kayaks and, you know, like. Yeah. I don't know about. I wonder how much space that is.
It's really, it's too bad. Yeah, it's too bad, I mean, really. Honestly, it's gonna be at least a couple more hours. Unless you're on several nights, it's not good, it's combination. Probably getting in bed now. You can do it. It's hard to get between the cups and LA. What a game. No, yes, it was night. Four, four twenty. Nancy and in two hours, two in the base, was tied. The guy with the red beard, a German. Oh, like a lion. Hair, beer red hair, moustache. Here you go, head home, neat.
He just took the last one.
Oh, oh, oh. Beer flying in the air and throwing that away. Looks awesome, really. What do you think, John?
What's up?
There was an email. Yeah, did you see it?
No.
Oh, it's just one of them. Wasn't signed by anybody, this one. Just that, it's the same stuff, but just they didn't sign their name.
Yeah, I need to see this.
So it says all the same stuff.
To me, I don't put my stock on a person that doesn't sign their letters.
Yeah. Have you gone through all the papers? Have you seen the one from?
Most of them.
You've not seen the confirmation letter?
Yes.
That was the one where it said.
Governor, money, wrenches, $2,000. Governor's, you know, two, one wrench, ratchet.
Yeah.
$10,000.
Right.
You're a jetting, it was for a transformer, so. Worst thing that could happen to that.
We're still on TV? Thank you.
I don't like being on camera either.
Especially if we're sitting around dawdling.
They're doing to earn their money.
Thank you.
James?
They just gave me.
Sir, is this a broadcast on, can you on TV? And so this is recorded right now. Great, thank you.
There's a set procedure, if you've seen what I've been doing and everything, that way, it's not gonna be open to the public until after the applicant has been able to present.
And we have to, the whole issue here is, we can't accept it because it wasn't complete, so they're trying to complete the application, but we can't open it for discussion if it's not a complete application. It's missing the signature, and so they're just faxing it over now. They're complicated.
I would love to, but.
One thing that is residential, San Feon, is it's not a residential.
What a son, I mean, it's not what.
Shorefront residential. Trying to think, we're back to the agenda, it was 2014 when we, oh, we heard this the first time, you know? And.
No. But in this case, it was a very.
Same thing, they're proposing a campground again, but I'm not.
Thank you, Dean.
Is that his daughter?
And that goes along with.
Yeah, to scan it in and send it. So that would be the email, and then that would be the attachment.
But don't you think it's odd that you're doing the same as I do?
Yep. As you're telling me, it's true.
Okay, we good? We're good, y'all keep that. That's for y'all to keep for the records. Okay. Folks, if we can settle down now, I'm gonna go ahead and reopen the meeting again, and we can get started. Okay, we now have the proper paperwork, so we can now begin.
Thank you, and thank you for your patience in getting that worked out. We do appreciate it. Again, I'm Rosie Dennett, I'm the planning consultant for the applicant, which is New Hampshire Big Island Company, owned by Scott Everett. Scott couldn't be here tonight because it is his daughter's birthday, and that's why he sent his brother, Tim James, to be his representative. We also have tonight here Dave Lee, our architect, and Erin Lambert, our engineer, and John Arnold, our attorney. I'll just quickly go over the proposal, and, because I know that you did get the information in your packets, and so I'm sure you've had a chance to review them. And then Dave's going to walk you through some of the plans here, and try to do it in a way that the neighbors can also see it. And then, we will. And then, we will also then focus on the approval criteria for a special exception that you have in your municipal code. So just to reiterate, this is a request for your approval of a special exception for a small conference center on Big Island, in accordance with the municipal code sections 235-26 and 69. As we stated in our development report, the vision is to provide this community with seasonal meeting room space and retreat space for nonprofit organizations, and a conservation educational camp for girls ages eight to 14 years. The owner grew up in this area and continues to own lake shore homes in the neighborhood. The camp will offer a scholarship program for low-income families to provide opportunities for girls to enjoy the lake who might not otherwise get that outdoor experience. The girls' weekly camp sessions for up to 40 campers will occur primarily from mid-June to mid-August. And the nonprofit group meetings then would occur on either end of that. The group meetings, the retreat center would accommodate up to 60 people at a time. And all guests will be arriving via boat trips from Pogus Bay Marina. We do have an informal agreement at this time with him, and anticipate getting a final formal approval, written legal document, to be submitted with the site-specific development plan, if we hopefully make it that far. Several years ago, the board, this board, did consider a variance request for similar use for youth camp for girls on Big Island. The application was withdrawn in light of neighbor concerns at that time. Last year, the city council rejected a proposal to rezone the property from residential to commercial, and advised the applicant to better address neighbor concerns before coming back with a proposal. So specifically, one of the primary concerns expressed in the rezoning application was that it would be, was, would be open-ended, in that it provided the potential for a wide variety of commercial uses to be, to occur on the island. So in response to that concern, we modified the proposal to be a specific use, the small conference center, which is allowed by special exception, while keeping the underlying residential zoning intact. So what we are proposing is a specific use with specific parameters, but the residential zoning remains the same, and if there are any changes to this use, it would have to conform to the residential zoning district, and if it's anything different, it would need to go through a review process before use. So this is an effort to be very specific about what it is we're trying to do. We met with staff a while back to determine just exactly what use this proposal fit into in your zoning definitions. And what was determined is that the conference center was the best fit. There's no specific use defined in your code for this use, for a youth camp that has a structured program to it. And so it was determined that we could fit under the definition of a conference center, which, just to state for the record, reading out of your code, if I might, a conference center is a facility which is used for the provision of services for meetings, conferences, exhibition space, or seminars, and further may provide accommodations for sleeping, food preparation, eating, recreation, entertainment, resource facilities, and meeting rooms. The youth camp does fall within this definition, as it will be a conservation program structured camp. It's not a commercial campground. To better address the neighbors' concerns, which are well documented, we needed to have, it was felt that we needed to have a specific development plan, so that we could properly and thoroughly do the analysis of the impacts, so that you could make the decision with the best possible information. And you really can't do visual analysis or noise analysis without a specific plan. So we went ahead and did that, and so that was not part of the previous proposals, and that was a disadvantage for decision-makers, not to have those specifics. So I think I'm going to have Dave go ahead and, at this time, go through the plans with you, and then we'll focus on the approval criteria.
I'll see that. Okay.
Yeah.
Sorry, it's hard to address it to both groups. So we have a number of different plans, which I believe are the same as what you have in your submittal. This top cover is our site plan, showing the different structures. This is the existing house that's on the property now, with a bathroom facility added to the back of it. This is the meeting dining facility, and then a pavilion attached to it. And then these are the five, we call them wooden tents, and would represent the accommodations for the guests. Just by way of clarification, the separate plan shows the continuous foundation and footing systems for the building. So you can see, these structures have pretty much the same as the roof plan, where the accommodations sit on elevated piers off the ground. And then finally, there was concern with regards to transportation, how they get to and from the island. So we put in a vicinity map that shows the boat access from the Pogus Bay Marina. So campers can come and go from, with a pontoon boat, from the Pogus Bay Arena, I mean Marina, the, the, yes, you could park there, because there's adequate parking at the Marina, so... So you're a little bit unique in that you don't have onsite parking provided, because it's an island. Well, I've got this plan up, also show you, there's an existing dock that serves the residents now. We're proposing moving the dock and creating a roped-off swimming area for the guests in the current beach area. This plan also shows the necessary setback requirements. It shows the wetland zone. It shows the 50-foot shoreline setback. It shows a 75-foot wetland buffer setback. And in terms of visual analysis, we've shown the existing house, and the proposed structures are behind the 50-foot shoreline setback, which includes dense vegetation. We've also shown it in a winter condition, when the leaves are off the trees, and representing both coniferous and deciduous trees. Again, this is the existing house. The proposed structures are a little bit more visible in this plan, but you can see the vegetative buffers still exist. This shows a bird's-eye view taken with a Google Earth aerial and the existing vegetation. And what we did is, we dropped a 3D model of the proposed structures, and they mostly sit in the center of the island, again, because of the different setbacks. The proposed dock is shown here, the existing residence. Again, wishing to be very specific about our proposal, we've created floor plans of the different structures, both the reuse of the existing house, which is this structure, and the bathroom addition to the back of it. The cabins, or wooden tents, don't have bathrooms in them. It's just strictly bunkhouses, bunk beds for the guests. And then this existing structure becomes the nurse's office or infirmary. The existing residence becomes the director's residence, the small office. It's a welcome center. There's an existing kitchen and laundry in that building now. These are elevations of the existing house, all four elevations, and then it shows the bathroom addition off the back. Again, trying to maintain the character of the existing residence, and doing any kind of addition to that building off the backside, which isn't visible from anywhere but within the island. Just a floor plan showing the dining meeting facility, which is here, with the kitchen, and a small speakers stage here, bathrooms, and then what we call the arts and crafts pavilion, or it's a teaching pavilion. It's open-air, a roof but no walls. Again, trying to present an architectural character that's in keeping with the natural setting of the island, low-scale, fairly traditional style of architecture. And then the wooden tents themselves, we call them wooden tents because they have a hard floor and roof, but the walls are basically louvers, screen louvers. They probably have electric light to them, but no plumbing. Pretty humble structure. They're elevated, so we put stairs up to them. They sit on six concrete sonnet-to-piers, so they touch the ground lightly, no continuous footings, minimal excavation or construction. There's elevations of the sides of that building. We've used this similar kind of structure in many other camps across the country. We specialize in camp and conference center design. So these have been, received design awards. It's a nice blend between permanent housing and safety, getting up off the ground and having a covered hard-shell roof. Me and the concerns of one of the conservation commission's issues was providing disabled access to one of the units, so one of them sits closer to the ground and has an ADA ramp to the front door. So that, those are the details of the development. I think one of the things that I'd like to point out as a camp and conference center designer is, there seems to be a lot of confusion about this proposed use. As I've gotten camps and conference centers, I've worked with planning and zoning boards around the country, often they don't have a camp and conference center use in their zoning code. So you end up doing a special use review approval, or special exception to divert use. So I'm trying to clarify, we've been trying to clarify what this use is. And according to zoning code, the conference center, in your zoning code, was the closest use, but I think there's confusion that it's a commercial campground for unrelated guests using it. It's a structured program, either for adults or children. And conference center is what you yourselves, I think, in our meeting with the staff, felt was the closest definition to this use. So camp, it's not a commercial campground. It's just the closest thing that you yourselves have, and that's why we're applying under that use. And I think even the neighborhood objections, there's a lot of confusion about conference center, what a conference center is, and also what a campground, a commercial campground, and it's, it's not either of those in the technical sense, or in the traditional sense, I mean. So, Rosie?
Yeah, so we're going to have our engineer address the stormwater a little bit, and then also the noise study that we had done.
Erin Lambert with Nobis Engineering. As David was mentioning, the tent cabins will be on stilts, and so the idea is to have minimal disturbance of the site. We want to try to minimize the impervious area we're creating, and keep the stormwater patterns similar to what they are today. So they would have a pitched roof, and there would be a stone drip edge on either side, so that any water that was hitting the roof would run into those drip edges and be infiltrated to try to recharge groundwater in the area to which it falls today. And we would employ similar techniques with the addition to the residents today and the new building that would be constructed for the dining hall. We would be looking to put drip edges, so that that water is infiltrated back into the ground. We'd also incorporate some rain gardens and rain barrels, take the opportunity to reuse any of the water that we could capture, if we have plantings on site or other uses for that stormwater.
Do you want to talk about the noise?
Okay. One of the concerns that we heard was a question about what, what sort of noise impacts or, that this might have to the residents that are on the mainland. This is not my area of expertise, but we did hire an acoustic consultant, and his, is his area of expertise. So there should be a report from Ruder Associates in the packet that was submitted. Eric Ruder is an acoustic engineer, and what he did was, previously for another camp, he had recorded the sounds of 100 children playing, I believe it was flag football, some other type of activity, they were all running around. So he has data regarding the noise that was generated from that controlled population of kids. He also placed recording equipment on the shore, across from the island, which is approximately 1,500 feet from the nearest point on the island. He compared those background levels at the, on the shoreline with the levels of sound that were recorded for the students, and basically his conclusion, which is the last paragraph in his report, is that the estimated level from the children engaged in a waterfront activity will be at or below the existing sound levels. So that report is in your packet.
Apologize for the tag-team approach, not always the best, but we want to make sure that we cover all the issues that you're interested in. One concern that's been expressed by neighbors is a fear that there will be a no-wake zone declaration by the state for the boats traveling between the, this island and the shoreline to the south. Actually, we've had some neighbors express a desire for a no-wake zone, and some against, so... But we just want to state on the record that, in any case, we're not, the applicant is, has no plans to pursue that designation one way or the other. And our understanding is that previous attempts for that designation have not been successful. So just wanted to clarify that issue. In response to concerns about the loon nesting site, there is a loon nesting site on the eastern shore of the island, in the back of the island, occupied primarily during June of each year. And we are proposing to work with the Loon Preservation Center on a mitigation plan that's going to include fencing of an area, identifying a safe area around the nest, and then monitoring the nest. A natural buffer already does exist with the extensive mature brush along the edge of the wetland, and then there's also a significant rock outcrop off the shore that keeps boats from going into that area. It's probably why the loons are there. And the senior biologist with the Loon Preservation Center did visit the site last year. He did provide us with some educational materials for the campers, but I do want to make it clear that, he made it clear to us that he was not making a recommendation one way or the other. He was going to wait until the board, this board decides on the use, and before he would work with us any further on any plans or anything. So I don't want to misrepresent his interaction with us. Regarding the approval criteria analysis, what you have to base your decisions on. Obviously, we believe, as was stated in our development report to you, that our proposal is in accordance with your special exception approval criteria, specifically specified in zoning ordinance article 11, section 235-70C, 2A through H. Specifically, a conference center is allowed by special exception in the residential single-family zoning industry. And the island could support up to seven single-family homes in a cluster development, understanding that would have to be reviewed and approved. But in accordance with the municipal code, so the... But in accordance with the municipal code, so the residential zoning district now currently does allow for a cluster development, and so we did look into what that would entail since we now have public water and public sewer to the island, and we could have more residences there than what we have today. So we believe that the nature of our proposed use, in its mission to preserve the natural setting and educate the visitors about the environment, that our proposed use is far less impacting than if the island were subdivided into more single-family homes. The use will not create undue traffic congestion, as Dave described, that's one advantage of having an island, we don't have the cars going through the immediate adjacent neighborhood. So we're proposing to use this commercial marina where they can actually, where they can accommodate the traffic for the guests, and they have the correct zoning to do that. The newly installed public water and sewer lines to the island, they went underneath the lake, have been sized to accommodate the proposed use. The design approach to limit the amount of impervious surfaces, as Erin was describing, and centralize the stormwater to promote groundwater recharge, has been discussed with the conservation commission. The proposed use does not significantly increase demand for municipal services. On-site fire protection will be provided in accordance with fire department recommendations. Trash will be removed by conference center staff and transported to the commercial marina for proper disposal. Actually, public service agencies could benefit from having the use of the facilities for training meetings and retreats. All special exception requirements for the proposed use have been met with this application submittal. Regarding public hazards and neighborhood compatibility, limiting activities associated with the use to the island or immediately adjacent to the island will not result in creating public hazards. The swimming area, for example, will be contained in the well-marked area connected to the beach on the island, as Dave demonstrated on the site plan. The advantage of locating the use on the island is that most of the potential impacts, like traffic, noise, visual, are minimal or nonexistent. By using a commercial marina to transport people to and from the island, traffic generation is limited to a commercial area that's designed to accommodate it. The location of the heavily vegetated island over 1,500 feet away from the closest shore land neighbor enables the small scaled use to be well screened, and the plans, we've tried to demonstrate that. These plans are computer-generated, but they were based on photographs and actual onsite tree surveys, so we've tried to make them as accurate as we possibly could. And only, if you'll notice, only the existing house continues to be visible, and that was the goal. The small conference center is sized approximately to minimize the amount of disturbance to the island, providing an outdoor experience for girls from the surrounding community to participate in learning hands-on conservation methods is an extraordinary opportunity, unique to an island setting. With respect to the city's master plan, the primary focus of this proposal is twofold: to minimize disturbance to the island, to assure neighborhood compatibility, and to protect your natural resources while providing meeting and retreat space for area nonprofit groups in an exceptional island setting, and providing an invaluable outdoor learning experience for girls regardless of the family's income level. Minimizing the project footprint, amount of tree clearing, land disturbance, and impervious surfaces, and centralizing the stormwater furthers the city's objectives to protect the water quality in Pogus Bay. The proposed use with limited impacts is also in accordance with the master's plan, with the master plan's stated goals to preserve the neighborhood character and natural environment. The use provides some additional employment opportunities in accordance with the master plan's economic development goals. And the educational program for the girls camp furthers the master plan's objective to develop local educational opportunities and resource protection and conservation. This afternoon, I received from staff a copy of a few letters from neighbors. I think all of the issues that were raised have been addressed, so I won't go through all of those, I'll let the neighbors speak for themselves. Regarding the conservation commission letter that you received from the chairman, I believe, of that board, I was confused at the nature of that letter in saying that what we ended up submitting was different than what was presented to the conservation commission. It's exactly the same plan, we simply added three things that the commission mentioned: the swimming area, the accessible tent cabin, the handicap accessible tent cabin, and the structure dimensions weren't on the plans before. So it's exactly the same plan, so I'm not quite sure where the confusion for that is. That meeting was taped, if we need to get a transcript to show that, but I'm not, that particular letter was troubling, so I'm not sure what the issue was with that. But I did talk with staff, and staff concurred that we did present this as a conference center, so there wasn't any difference with the proposal that you're seeing tonight and what they saw in that regard. So I think we'll just end it there and answer questions that you might have for us.
First question. The building in the center that I guess looks like the bathhouse addition and stuff like that, is that building currently in place?
Yes.
This portion of the building, kind of a Y shape, is there now. The additional infirmary area, the bathhouse, I mean, is what will be added.
And that front section and all is already currently in place?
Yes.
And with the added modification, will they need to have, because that intrudes into the 50-foot shoreline?
The new addition does not.
But it's a modification to the thing, and I was just wondering, because we're modifying the, will any other change happen to that building? Because the way I see it is, the only thing they would be able to do is tie in the other building and leave that building structurally the same, in this exact same footprint, with no modification.
They can add the addition as proposed.
Right.
Because the area for the addition is out of the buffer zone.
That's correct. But no other modification to the building, existing building, other than that would be able to take place?
Outside, outside changes, inside you can...
Right, outside.
Yep, correct.
Physical outside that would do anything to the footprint?
Just the section that goes towards the lake, I think, applies.
That's correct.
There may be one other corner that touches the buffer, not as close if it doesn't touch.
Well, that's going to be my second section, is the bunkhouse. Is that existing? And if not, it appears to encroach also.
The little building in the middle?
Yeah, in between the two larger buildings. It appears...
Is that the utility structure?
It's called a bunkhouse.
Is that the proposed infirmary?
That's here. That's an existing structure.
That in itself is encroaching already on the setback, and so in addition to that would come under...
It's outside the setback. This dash line is the setback.
Right, and the corner of it is, at least on my drawing, it shows it over.
Okay, but it's an existing structure?
Okay. So there'll be no outside modifications to that one also then, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
I'm not sure I agree with you, if you look at these plans.
I'm sorry?
I mean, I'm very familiar with what the camp looks like now, so you're going to have to make exterior modifications to it to make it look like what you want it to look like.
Are you referring to the new buildings?
No, referring to the main house.
Existing residents.
Based on the elevation drawings we submitted, I think that's what she's referring to.
Oh, so are you talking about the front elevations of the existing house?
Yeah, that intrude into the 50-foot.
So that we haven't changed? You'd like to see those? The exception is the bathroom addition to the back, is that what you're referring to?
No, referring to the front.
The front is as is. Here's the front elevation, here's the photograph.
You're not making any changes to that building?
To the back of it, we're adding on a bathhouse. But the front, that's what it currently looks like, and that's what's reflected in our elevations. So there's the existing, that's this structure, that's that structure, this is the front of the existing residence, which is this elevation, that's the existing front porch.
Okay.
I think you'll find that consistent.
Are you probably confusing because of summer perspective and the winter perspective, or be it computer generated or not, two different views of two different buildings.
So here, are you referring to these two?
I am, maybe it's just because of the way it's...
One doesn't show the windows and stuff, and the other one, it appears to have windows. That's what makes it look different, as I sit here and look closer. One looks like an actual picture of it, and the other one is generated. So it put in the doors and the windows and stuff like that.
The windows, the porch, the roof.
This is what it actually looks like.
Right.
It can be.
Now, Dean, in discussing of the, since they brought it up, the conservation commission's letter, what was your, the planning department's take on what they were saying, and why would they interpret it the way they did? Speaking for yourself and not on behalf of the...
Right. We looked at the plans that were submitted, and we looked at the plans that were submitted to the conservation commission, and we did not see any significant difference at all.
Why do you think the chairman of the conservation commission wrote this letter?
I don't know. You didn't talk to him.
We don't know.
I don't know.
Okay. Fair enough.
And I would remind the board, you are free to, you know, consider any element of this application that you wish, but I do want to remind the board that if this use is approved, and the application is just for use, it will go to a planning board for a complete site development, review, and public hearing, et cetera, et cetera. Normal planning board process after that.
Okay. For the sake of everything, I'm going to go ahead and open it up to the public, okay? And that way we can go ahead and start that portion of the meeting. That gives us a little less than an hour. As I said, we stop at 10:00. So with that being said, I'm going to go ahead and open it up to the public, and ask if anybody wished to speak for or against this application, please come forward at this time and introduce yourself for the record, and remember, please be respectful of each other, please. Okay? With that, whoever's first.
Hi. Nice meeting you all. My name is Mark Tito, I'm a resident on the road, and, you know, it's funny, taking a backseat here tonight, lots and lots of passion in this room tonight, lots of really good people that are trying to come to grips and trying to find a simpler solution to what we have going on here. In my humble opinion, you know, anytime you give back to a community and allow people access to this lake today is a win. You know, what form that takes, I don't know, what shape it takes, I don't know, but knowing Scott, and I think very highly of him, knowing Scott and what he's trying to do there, it inspires me, right? It really does. And I hope some folks are inspired by it. I hope the more information everyone gathers along the road, the closer everybody gets to this. But truly, at the end of the day, less all the politics and the feelings, it's just a potentially really, really great thing for the community. So I back it, I back Scott, I back this plan 100%, and I also back my neighbors. I care very deeply and dearly for what their considerations are as well. So I want to find an amicable way to make this happen and keep everybody happy. So thank you for your time, truly appreciate it.
My name is Fayed Youssef. I live in 30 Pogus Park Road in Laconia, practically across the island, and just a matter of, look at it, look at these two pictures, this is all I want you to look at them. See, this in the wintertime would be practically bare, and look at this building, I mean, would be an eyesore for everybody. Having seen that, the owner has spent hundreds of thousands of dollars, and he will spend hundreds more thousands of dollars. Don't tell me he's doing that for girls camp, there's something in his sleeve, he wants play the game, get things moving, but after that, he will do whatever he wants to do. I'd just like to take one minute. Who here opposes the island development? Please stand up.
Sir.
Please stand up.
Sir.
Yeah, sorry, okay.
We do not do that, you address the board, please. I'm only going to give this once, and like I said, then I will start expelling people. So I'm going to nip it at the bud now, please.
Yeah, that's just a matter of, I like to see who opposes it and not opposes it as a count.
It doesn't matter, sir.
I'm not trying to cause any feeling, but feeling.
Just address the board.
Anyway, I look at this island like a moon, and there's similarity between the island and the moon. The moon shines to a lot of thousand of miles, and the moon bring lights, avoiding the floods, high tide, low tide, and all these kind of things. Imagine, and thousand of miles see the moon in the meantime. Probably in this here, I would say maybe the entire Pogus Park Road, see it, all South Downshore, see it, all Long Bay, see it as well, and just at least over 500 people or homes on this stretch. Now, don't tell me you're going to do, I mean, give the exception to one person for a certain purpose, for personal feeling, for personal money-making, whatever you call it, just for one person, and avoid 500, excuse me, 500 people. That's not be a fair situation. That's one thing. If the board approves that, which is fine, but in near future, after he approves it, I probably will give my house as recreation center for handicapped students or children, age from six, say, to 12. I have seven grandchildren, age from one to 13, so those handicapped students or children can play with my grandchildren, will create a good bond, and give them the privilege using the water, the boat, the raft, these kind of things. I mean, in this case... I mean, in this case, if I apply for that, I assume you should not deny me if you approve that, because that would be completely, fully discrimination. If you approve him, you're going to approve me, and maybe approve that guy, and this guy, the entire shoreline will be, whatever you call it. So I really have a point here, and that in the meantime, I can do this, I can say, well, I'm gonna use my recreation center for children as a showroom. I have a little business, I can use that showroom to show the customer, my customer, I'm in a dock business, fortunately or unfortunately, whatever you call it, so I can have some customer come to my shoreline, look at the dock, look at the boot lift, jet ski lift, mooring whips, bumber, whatever, and I will promise you, it will be probably one couple a day, maybe. And that's great for me, I mean, that would be a great opportunity for me to create more business, like the owner of the island, he covered up by girls' camp, but yet have what you call it, conference center. So I'm going to call mine handicap or recreation house as well as showroom. So it's a lot of issues involved here. I'm not going to the niki-biki, whatever you call that, about the sewer, the water, the birds, and all this stuff. By the way, he ignoring, be honest with you, ignoring the well of the neighborhood, that 500 people at least, the wildlife, don't tell me he will protect the bird, the loon, don't tell me that. I mean, that can go so far, but they have to have a protective area to stay there, raise their children, babies, whatever, and by the way, we have loon in front of our house, everybody saw that. The environmental, the well of the neighborhood, all that is ignored. For what? For personal feeling, personal benefit? No, no, sir. Anyway, I took so much of time of you guys, thank you, Mr. Chair and Board Member, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Who would like to speak next?
Evening.
Good evening.
Name's George Flanders, live on Pogus Park, longtime resident, homeowner, just wanna voice my opinion against this project. I think that to Mr. Youssef's point, virtually all the people that have any part of the park south down, have come to enjoy our properties, would vote against this. The people that are in favor of it are people that are employed by him. The experts that have come out here to render these drawings, their opinions, whether they're consultants, engineers, architects, are all being paid by him. Of course, they're gonna support him. The people that are here that are not professionals, as Mr. Tito earlier, they're indirectly employed by him. Or they're friends and family.
Please, there been no comments from, no? Continue, please.
So, so I'm concerned about the whole impact, because who's gonna be there to monitor this situation? Who's gonna be there? They propose one pontoon boat, and yet the dock system could accommodate six pontoon boats. What's the issue there? I mean, that tells you that it's a fabrication of what reality is going to be. The so-called tents, I remember sleeping in a tent, I never slept in tents like that, I'm sure no one here has. Those are very nice cabins, it could be rented, if you granted this exception, who's to say? Who's gonna be there monitoring the number of boats, the number of people, the noise level? They could have concerts at night, the noise travels over the water, and we hear it on the weekends from the margate, which is over twice the distance. It's disruptive to the impact of our homes. We've lived there for a long time, and who's to say? He's a real estate guy, he develops it, couple of years down the road, he sells it, makes a huge profit. The loons are gone by then. We have problems with all the activity, our property values diminish, that diminishes your property tax base. That's not a good thing for this community. I hope that all of you will understand the voices here tonight are not being paid, but this is our lives, that we live here, we spend our time here, we bring our friends and family, and this would disrupt that. How would you like a conference center built in your neighborhood? I don't think anybody would appreciate that. I want you to think about that. This is obviously a huge decision, but you can understand the grievances that we have in the majority are not being paid here tonight, but you need to understand that that's in the best interest of the bay, the community, and the residents. I thank you for your time.
And thank you.
Thank you, board. My name's Mark Mallahan, I'm from 42 Pogus Park Road, and I'd like to thank you for coming in and taking your night off for us. Look, first of all, I'd like to ask the board to please say no to the special exception. When this, when the special exception ordinance was put into effect, they didn't take into the consideration that this was for, they took it into the consideration that it was for land purpose. A conference center needs parking, and a conference center needs to have access for fire departments, police departments. Something happens out there with the kids, okay? We don't have the proper services, gonna put a burden on our city. This is gonna, this is gonna cost the city money. With 40 to 60 people out there every week, we're gonna have a new group of people every week that changes hands in a small island, as you can see that island right there, you can actually see all the wetlands around that island. That's about 2.2 acres, take the wetlands out of it, it's probably a little bit less than an acre and three-quarters. Small island, 60 people. The noise level from this island, I know that they have a study, they didn't do a study from this island, there wasn't 60 people out there on this island in this bay with the mountains surrounding, with the water. I live at 42 Pogus Park Road, directly across from this island, I can hear people talk at the margate. That's 2,000 feet away, more than 2,000, it's probably more like 6,000. This island is 1,500 feet from our properties. The margate's 6,000 feet or more. I can hear the conversation clearly from the margate. Again, I asked the board, please say no to the special exception, there's no parking on the island, there's no access for fire. Look at all the outside studies that have been done, throw them out, they have not been done on that island. They've been done at different islands or different properties, it doesn't match our lake of 300 feet above sea level. Again, is this a girls' camp, or is it a conference center? What is it? Does anybody really know? Please, take this into consideration and vote no on this. The conservation has written a letter against this, it needs to be put to bed today. Every resident on Pogus Park Road, except for a select few that are friends of Scott, want this. The rest of these people behind me are against it. Say no, please. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Reginald Gardette.
We might as well come up together, we're a couple.
So y'all sing, huh? Okay.
Thank you.
I had a stroke a few years ago, so she'll help me if I stutter too much. We live at 58 Pogus Park Road, we've been there almost 20 years, we've seen the loons disappear from Little Island because of, somebody on this council gave a permit to put a cabin up on the island, on Little Island. Now, I'm not blaming anybody, I don't know if it's anybody on this council, but somebody gave, somebody a permit to put that cabin on the island, and it chased the loon away, okay? Now, if, if, if there's any, any kind of jibber-jabber going on with the girls at the cabins, okay, just the noise alone chased the loons away, and they will not return. And...
Can I finish?
Yes, you can finish.
Thank you, dear. He's very concerned. And I presented my letter, and I just wanted to add to it that we've really been here well over 20 years, and he's right that the loons did disappear for quite a while, now they're coming back on the east side of Big Island. Not only that, but my daughter and I and other people have seen an eagle. I've never seen one on Pogus Bay, right next door on the shore at our neighbors. We quietly opened the door, the eagle took off and landed on the rocks at the, at the end of Big Island, and the eagle was there for over 20 to 30 minutes. Nature is so important. We tend to overbuild. Can't we leave the back end where all those wonderful wetlands are for nature to continue? It's so sad to allow something, a large construction of a building, the loons will leave and will not come back, and they don't come just in June. They're here, even last week, I saw the loon again, right in the bay. They're here all summer long. If something large is built there, girls are girls, there'll be at least 60 girls, the councils, if that is what the plan is, but that little swimming area doesn't look like it's enough for them to be, to be out there, and if they're out there, it's natural for them to make a lot of noise and enjoy life. There's plenty of beautiful camps all over this lake, but all over our beautiful state. Why should we allow a small one on this small island? It doesn't have enough of nature for them to explore. They're gonna be spending their time inside that building with the arts and crafts, and then they're gonna go swimming, what else can they do? They can't go on the other side? It just seems like it isn't feasible for something like this. And really...
Excuse me, this is my mother. I just wanna let you know that the, this is the only loon nest on Pogus, on, in Pogus Bay.
Yeah.
Bar none.
Right, right. And the island itself, I don't feel, is large enough to have any kind of expanded development, and it is only 1,500 feet from shore. People were out in front of the island in a kayak, carrying on a conversation, I'm right opposite, I'm on my deck, I can hear everything they say. If people want a conference, they've got the margate, there are plenty facilities for conferences that are a reasonable distance, and we don't mind a little bit, it's, it's fine, and that's a commercial business, it brings good taxes to, to the city, but this island was made residential for a purpose, and even if somebody else puts another cottage on there, with all the wetlands, it's not gonna be a large area, it might be one or two, but the main thing is that nature will be greatly affected, and the environment, all the trees that are gonna be removed, it'll be bare on our side, just buildings. And of course, it'll affect our taxes, because, your taxes, because we know our property's gonna devalue, we're right there. And I want to thank you for listening to me.
And thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
Good evening.
I'm Karen Haeffler, and I live in, on 8 Pogus Park Road, which is the yellow house, it's the last one at the end of the road before you get to the beach club. I am directly across from Big Island. My concern, my husband talked to Scott Everett a few weeks ago when he bought the house next door. My concern is, is he going to use the house next door as a dropping off or a spot to get over to his island? One concern. But the real concern is, when he, my husband was talking to Scott, he asked him, we were talking about a few things about the house, and when he was talking to Scott, we asked, he asked him, what's going on with Big Island? "Oh," he said, "I'm gonna do shortened sessions of a girls' camp." Hello? Is this a conference center, or is this a girls' camp? Okay, a girls' camp usually has tents, a girls' camp has bathrooms with showers in it, a girls' camp has an arts and craft, a girls' camp has a swimming area, small beach, let me tell you, that beach is minute. A girls' camp has boating, usually kayaks and sailing and so forth, you gonna do that on Pogus Bay when the boats in the summertime are going back and forth at 50 miles an hour? These are all what we know of as a girls' camp. Not a conference center. A conference center doesn't have an arts and crafts building, a beach, they live in tents, shower rooms. This doesn't sound like a conference center to me. And it's your decision to make as to whether you think it's a conference center or a girls' camp. Originally, obviously, Scott Everett still has it in his head that he's gonna have a girls' camp out there, but he's gonna call it a conference center. What a neat deal, huh? Keep it in mind.
Oops. Thank you.
Hi, folks. My name's Mike Delavecchia, I live on the Little Island, so I am a direct neighbor to the Big Island. I don't have a speech prepared, so I'm just kinda waiting on this, but I truly believe Scott Everett's heart is in the right place. I would much rather see a girls' camp on this island than seven 36-foot tall condos that Pogus Park Road is turning into, they're tearing down an island, two, a cottage, two or three every year, and put up these big mega houses as large as the footprint could be allowed. If you look at this picture, folks, this is after all the buildings are up. It doesn't look as bad as seven 36-foot tall condos, believe me. I would much rather have this. There are loons living, I live on the Little Island, we have a loon that comes by there, it doesn't live on the island, but they're there every day, they come, there's three of them, they come through every, all the time. I don't think nature adapts to people moving in. There's a bear that lives on Pogus Park Road, I don't know if people are aware of that. You know, to be concerned, some extra boat traffic going to the island, I haven't done a boat count, I don't know if Rosie has, but on the weekend, there's a thousand boats that go by there. A little bit extra traffic going to the island for the girls' food and trash coming off is minute compared to what's already going on there. That's enough said.
Thank you.
May I come again?
Nope, we got, gotta give everybody a fair chance, first round, okay?
Mr. Chairman and Board Members, my name is Sarah Kerewak, I live at 24 Pogus Park Road, and I also own the cottage next to me, which is 18 Pogus Park Road, and I am a year-round resident, and I've lived there for 25 years. One of my main concerns when I looked at the proposal was that Mr. Everett was asked or advised in 2014 to meet with neighbors, to talk to them. He has never spoken to me. I asked several other neighbors, has he spoken to you? I asked several other neighbors, "Has he spoken to you?" And they all said no. That would have been nice, but he hasn't even taken the time to do that. Again, about the noise, I know we keep talking about that, but it is major. The Mar Gate was there before I was, so I live with that. We even heard the names of the people that got married last Saturday. We weren't invited, we felt like we were there. But in the summer, I often have to close my slider to watch TV, but that's from the Mar Gate. And as has been pointed out, that's quite a distance. Now, I'm directly across from, and several of us have said we're directly across, but it seems like we are, and I'm, I am, I'm right across from Big Island. And sometimes we hear fishermen talk and that's, that's fine. But I can't imagine with a girls' camp that there aren't going to be speakers, bullhorns, microphones, there's some way you assemble people at, or children at a camp. So I'm sure we're going to hear that during the day, and that's 1,500 feet away. And what I want to point out is in the noise study by Ruder, it was interesting, they said they did the study on the shoreline. I would have loved to have them do the study for my property. They did it at Crane Court, which is in Southdown. That's behind buildings, that's across from the railroad tracks, that's not even on the shoreline. Safety, I'm concerned about that. It was pointed out, Mr. Everett talks about swimming. Well, a camp, you're in kayaks, you're in sailfish, you're in paddle boats. And with that very narrow 1,500 feet, and boats have to be, or are supposed to be, 500, excuse me, 150 feet from each other, from swimming areas, from moorings, how is that going to happen when you've got, I would assume, girls in paddle boats, sailfish, and they're talking about 40 girls? So that to me is a safety issue, not only for the campers, but for us who have boats. A campground is not allowed in a residential. This sounds to me like a campground. I think, no, I think I've made the points that I want to make and I thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Ben Gamash and I'm at 50 Pogus Park Road. I've been there for over 21 years. And I, I think you can see by the compassion that all the neighbors on Pogus Park Road have to deny this request for the special exception. I could repeat everything that they said. It is true that the lake acts like a speaker system and the noise bounces off the top and you can hear it far away. It's true about the traffic and it's true about the loons. But there's one thing that also we have to be aware of. Pogus Park Road has always been a peaceful residential home to many families, grandkids, and over the years, many memories have been set. Now, on Route 3, all that going down to Weas Beach, all commercial, it's all good, it's been commercial way before we all got there. We accept the noise, we accept the traffic and we don't mind. But if you look at the map, I know 1,500 feet sounds like a long way, but if you look at the map, my house and everybody else is so close to that island that we get to see everybody, we get to hear them talk, we, and it's a good thing when they're there, families, kids, when the doctor is there, we enjoyed all that. But now, look at the other map, all of a sudden, the capacity of all those buildings, even though two acres sounds like a lot, but if you look at the construction and you look at the density, that is what we're left with. We're left with a massive commercial piece of property that eventually will devalue our property. Now, it's true that all that commercial space on the other side, the values are lower, you can actually buy a commercial building on the water for half the price and keep it commercial and have a beautiful waterfront property. But that's not where we are. We're on Pogus Park Road, you have hardworking, good citizens and people that are sensitive to the residential feel. And at this time, he should have known that this is residential and because he wants to turn this into commercial, that's not our issue. The issue is, we have people here that want to leave it the way it is and they want to put the 27 condos and that's acceptable and it's residential, okay, so be it. Put 27 condos on it. I'm not speaking for the Pogus Park Road, but I am speaking to the fact that we need to continue to make this residential and leave the commercial factor away from this arena. And thank you very much, I know this is a tough issue for everybody involved and patience will prevail, but thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Mary Jo Knowlton and I've lived on Pogus Park since, well, let's just say the 60s and, and my mom is here and she's 91 and it's been there since 1951. The Big Island and the Little Island have always been just residential. We feel that they should stay residential. In the 60s and 70s, we didn't have loons, now we do. And I'm, I'm just very scared that they are going to go away. If this is starting out to be a girls' camp or a conference center, like Mr. Yusef said, something is, something's up, something's, he's got something up his sleeve kind of thing. Sounds like a lot of finagling by, by these people to get around things, to get approved. The fact is that it's a very small island. They call it the Big Island, it's not that big. There's plenty of places to have girls' camps and conference centers and I firmly believe that is not it. The loons are there and, and we all want them to stay for as long as, as they will. And they will not, they will flee. They will flee if, if this is infested by 40 girls and whatnot all the time, so. And I'm concerned if there's a bunch of little girls swimming and stuff, boats do go 40, 50 miles an hour and if one of them gets away, something's going to happen, you know, so. I, I'm very opposed to it and I can speak for my mom as well, so that's about it for me.
Thank you.
All right, good evening, everyone. I'm Ann Higgins, I'm also in a butter. I've known Scott Everett for just about three years and I traveled from Mass tonight so that I could be really clear and let you know in all sincerity that he is the nicest, most generous, just giving neighbor that I personally have ever had, so much, and this is a dead honest truth, my son Christopher, who's a teenager, constantly tells me it, as so does my eldest son, he is very giving and that's what he cares about. I too have a, an 11-year-old daughter and I'm acutely aware that we are very privileged. We were lucky enough to have my grandfather buy a place up here so he could fish, otherwise I wouldn't be here. And it so pleases me that we, that I'm in a community that would be willing to give to girls who aren't as privileged as my daughter so that they can learn to appreciate nature and have a lot of the gifts that my daughter has been given. So, and I want to end with this, I, I'm definitely not on his payroll, I'm not friends with Scott, I like to think I'm friends with a lot of folks, but they're in this room, I, because I definitely am, but nobody would get me to stand up here and tell you something that I didn't really believe, so I wanted you to know that. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Carolyn Malligan, my husband already spoke, so I'll just speak for a minute. We live at 42 Pogus Park Road and we were against this when it came before the board to change the zoning and we're still against it. And I have no problems, I don't know Mr. Everett and he probably is a very nice person and this has nothing to do with that. We bought in a single-family residential area because we wanted to live in a residential area, single family. We have two daughters that grew up there, that are away at school now, but I did bring a picture that my daughter won an award for in 2010 of the island and it was entitled, "The Joys of God Surround Us." So that's my view, every single morning when I wake up, when I do my dishes, when I go to bed, when I sit on my dock, when I mow my lawn. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll be, I'll be brief. My name's John Cooley.
Please set the microphone.
I'm a senior biologist at the Loon Preservation Committee, I've worked there since 2005. I haven't appeared before zoning board before and I bet you haven't heard about loons on most of your applications. And I've been glad to hear all the voices tonight in the room. I just want to briefly state that I have toured the island, we monitor the island and the bay for loons and in our work, monitoring, managing, doing research and outreach around the state, we've, we've covered Pogus Bay for at least a decade since about 2001, the nesting activity there. So, we're concerned that the proposed use of the island will pose a real challenge to successful loon nesting there. And the applicant, and I, I've met with Rosie, the applicant has contacted us about mitigating measures to lower the risk of human disturbance, like outreach to the campers, a split rail fence around the nest site. And unfortunately, in my experience, a conference or summer camp program on the island this size, less than three acres, is, is likely to substantially increase the risk nesting loons will fail or abandon the habitat in spite of the best efforts of island users to minimize the impact. And we'll certainly work with whatever happens on the island to do the best we can, but, but right now, we're, we're very concerned about that, that prospect. And we do, we've worked with summer camps around the lake on Winnebago Saki and usually find that the, the only adequate protection, truly adequate protection for a nest site is just to avoid use of the island during nesting and on Winnebago Saki and at Pogus Bay, that can, is primarily in June, but can begin in May and extend into July or, or early August. So, my, my concern is that the, the noise levels, the activity at the cabins and the dining hall, they're going to be within almost, you know, approximately 100 feet, looking at the plans of the loon nest site, are just a big change in the loon's nesting environment. And the tolerance for individual loons varies, but, but in general, this kind of nearby development and human activity is known to be negatively associated with loon reproductive success and nest site selection in New Hampshire. We work closely with summer camps and lake communities, so neighbors and developers around the state to manage human loon activity where they overlap so the two can coexist. In our experience, based, based on this work, the applicant's special exception development of the Big Island will pose a real management challenge. And we encourage Mr. Everett, the property owner, and the zoning board to incorporate this concern and their considerations for the appropriate use of the island. So thank you for your time and consideration.
May I impose on your kindness for a second and ask you to go over to the island drawing here and for us, I don't know where the loons nest, and if you could kind of show me about where these nesting areas are, that would be a great help.
Okay, that's a, that's a good question and loons are a long-lived species and often reuse the same nest site, so in recent years, it's been out, sort of in this cove here on, if I'm reading this right, yeah, approximately this easterly face of the island. We, we have however found nest sites at the south end of the island and then they have, the loons have at least attempted nesting once on the beach area of the island. That's typical, if their nest fails at one site and they have the whole island to choose from, they'll, they'll move around a bit on the island over the years, picking and choosing different nest sites. And that's part of our concern is that, you know, ideally, if this is, if this were national parks or something, we, we will leave the whole island to the loons. Unfortunately, that's, that's my focus, I know your, your focus and the interests here are bigger than that, but.
May I impose on your kindness one more time and ask, is there a particular reason that the loons seem to like that portion because that's all kind of like wetlands area? Is it like the currents or does it have to do with the way the sun shines or? I don't know loons and so I'm kind of, is there something special about an island and where certain locations, because at the bottom end they seem to like, but at the top end they don't, or is it just-
Some of that, some of that's hard to guess as from the human's point of view and, and there's no telling exactly where they're going to choose. But as Rosie stated in presenting the application, this is a, a more densely shrub-covered area, it's, it's less conspicuous, so it's out of sight for loon, there's a rocky sort of shoals here that protect it from wave action and also the close approach of motor boats. And, you know, one of the concerns looking at the development plan is that although the island is exposed to boat traffic crisscrossing the bay, it doesn't have as, as much dispersed paddle recreation around it now as it might get under some uses of the, of the island for, you know, summer camp programming. And I know, I, I think in considering this design, that may not be fleshed out yet, whether there's going to be kayaks out there, canoes or not, or whether the water use would just be at the roped-off swim beach, that may not be settled yet, but those are the kinds of management concerns in terms of wildlife management that we're faced with and concerned by looking long-term at, at a development like this, so.
Thank you.
I, I have one question, do you think the loons could nest over on the southeast side of the island because the house is on the northwest side of the island and it's the most distance they have from humans?
People may not be able to see that, but you're asking like, could they nest down here?
I'm just asking, do you think they're doing it because they're staying away from the house?
We, we have had a nest failure at this site from human disturbance in the last five or 10 years. It may have been, if my memory serves, it was, you know, the dog, the owner's dog or something that got the nest. And yeah, loons will tend to select a site that's as far as they can get from a dwelling or activity, but I don't know what, you know, what, how it would pan out if there were dozens of people using the island instead of a single, single family, so.
Okay. Thank you. Yep.
I will be brief.
Just give me a second, I got to do some housekeeping real quick. We do end the meeting at 10 o'clock and it is 9:47, so I just want to let everybody know that at 10 o'clock, we will stop the meeting and we will continue exactly where we left off, next month of the next meeting, okay? So, don't, I don't want anybody to be shook up if I say the meeting's going to be, what's the word I'm looking for, adjourned, not adjourned, but- Continued. Continued.
Tabled.
Oh, nope, continued.
Okay.
Not tabled yet. So, go ahead now, I just wanted to do the house-
I'll make it real quick. Donna England, 98, Pogus Park Road. I have two concerns. Mr. Everett owns several properties on our street now, one is about seven acres of woods and who's to say that after a year, he changes and not has boats come from Pogus Bay Marina and uses one of his seven acres of land that he owns on the corner of our street in Van Buren and uses that as a parking lot and uses one of his homes as the shuttle go-between. And we live on a very narrow street and it's hard for emergency vehicles to come down and if there was a, an emergency on the island, I don't, I don't know how things would happen because we've lost parking spaces that people used to park on, towards the railroad tracks and people park along the road, which makes it very, very narrow. And that's my main concern. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just want to thank the board for having us tonight, really appreciate it. My name is Jay Artito, I'm 136 Pogus Park Road, also in a butter, pretty clear earshot to the island as well. I'm also- I'm also a proud third-generation Pogus Parker and my kids are fourth generation. We've been here since 1942. So, part of the fact that we know this road really well. You know, I tell you, I have so much respect for my neighbors and I, I absolutely understand their points frankly. I think I have a view that they don't and it's probably because I'm closer. So, I want to make sure people understand what that view is tonight, if you allow me to do that. Change has always been really hard on this road. I remember when they paved it, my grandfather just fought the city. He wanted the dirt and the dirt would like end up in our kitchen sink. I'm not sure why he did that. Paving's much better. He lost that one for good reason. And they tried to put homes behind us, nature's view, and we had an uproar. We hated it. Couldn't stand the idea. They put in these beautiful homes. It's an awesome community. We're friends with them today. They're trying to put a wild trail in behind us and I'm sure half the room is divided on this one too. We're worried about people coming up from different areas of the town, setting up camps, setting fires. We, we've got all the paranoia you can possibly imagine. And on top of it, the town just put a ditch down our street, which nobody likes. It took all our parking away, right? At least something we agree on. Okay. So, here's the thing. I always, and I think most of us knew that that island would sell eventually. If you listen to your grandparents, they always told you, buy waterfront, they don't make more of it. It's true. So, I was absolutely delighted when Scott called me the day he, and hey, his PNS hadn't even gone through. He was giddy about the fact that he was buying this island. So, he asked me to come down and sit with him, which I did. And he told me a story about what it was like to grow up in Guilford, but he was an off-the-lake kid. I didn't know what that meant. I wasn't on-the-lake kid. Off-the-lake kid meant you just didn't have the money to be on the lake. And so, you looked at this beautiful piece of water every time you drove by it, but you just couldn't get on it. And here he was, 40 some odd years later, a successful business guy and he wanted to give back. And he said, "Jay, I want to build a camp, conference center, wherever you want to call it. I'm not even sure the semantics of the nomenclature anymore. But I want to build a place where I can help my community. If that means driving revenue for tax base, so be it. But really, I want Abby, his daughter, seven years old at the time, to be able to go to that camp with my daughter Lily, seven years old at the time. And maybe someday, they'll be able to camp counselors. And maybe when they're older, they'll continue to go back to that camp." And that was the vision. And that's been his vision ever since. So, I'm not sure what this, you know, and I understand people that don't know him don't have the advantage I do, but there's nothing in the sleeve. You don't have to take my word for it. I'm just going to give you my opinion on this one. So, my family's view is different. This is a guy whose motto in his very successful lending business is, "How do we change lives?" It just doesn't sound like a bad guy to me. He's one of the few people I actually trust with my kids and their lives. I've only known him for seven years. So, I'm in support of this. Incidentally, if I understood, it's a 501(c)(3). That is nonprofit. So, he's not here to make a buck. And the last thing that I worry about, let's say he bails on this whole thing, let's just say he capitulates, I'm out. The next person can go buy this and they can build seven 36-foot-high condos or townhouses? Is that real? You want to change a view? Put those out there. So, I don't know if I have the numbers right on those townhomes or single-family homes, but I think that's what I heard tonight. So, I'd much prefer something like this, nonprofit, et cetera. The last thing is on the noise. I worry about the noise, right? The bigger noise is, we got to get to the Margate folks because they'll shoot fireworks off till 1 o'clock in the morning. Like, that's the big noise for me. So, I don't know about the sound acoustic, et cetera, what's been done here. I can tell you, mics across on Little Island have never heard a peep from him. I really can't comment and I understand the concern, but the bottom line is, I know where this came from. I know where this came from. This came from some guy's heart that wants to give back to this community, which he loves. So, thanks for your time. Appreciate it.
We got time for about one more and then we're gonna...
I'm Sean Noe. We got a place on 8 Prescott Ave, which is on the other side of the bay over by Christmas Island. I'm just up here to talk about two points, one being that Scott is about the nicest person I've ever met in my life. He is in the business of changing lives and he works on that every day. And from the moment he bought that island, this was his vision. I know a lot of people like to skew their vision on what they would do, you know? This isn't Scott's idea. He has a girl. He wants to see girls get helped. Now, the other point is about the girls. We live in a community that has a lot of under, under-income people. Now, Scott's willing to give scholarships to these girls. My wife's a guidance counselor in Laconia. She's spoken with Scott about it. He's looking to help the local community. Now, to look and say, "Well, there's a lot of sound going on. There's boats flying by all day. There's a train that rings a bell every day. There's a boat lift that puts boats in and out at Southdown every day." There's going to be noise, but it's a good thing that he's looking to do here. And that's just my point of view. Thank you.
Thank you. One more.
Good evening. My name's Peter Cassell. I live at 6B Hidden Cove in Southdown and I'm the secretary of the Southdown Recreation Association. And I just want to let you know that at our last quarterly council meeting, which is the governing body of Southdown, we discussed the, this, tonight's meeting and what was going to happen. And we discussed issues about what we were concerned about. And the folks from Pogus Park have identified all the ones that, that are our hot buttons, which is safety, all getting those kids out on kayaks, canoes, stand-up paddle boards, et cetera. I don't know how you're going to keep them out of the channel when the boats go flying by. Medical, they're not going to have a nurse there except during the daytime. What happens if there's a medical emergency at 2 o'clock in the morning? How are they going to get somebody off? And the noise, I'm concerned, the study that was done states that the, the testing that they did and the monitoring was done during daylight. Noise travels greatly, more loud over water at night than any other time. Doesn't appear that they even tested or gave any information about what, what the noise level's going to be at night. And I'm not going to talk about the loons because John Cooley was eloquent about that, but just to let you know that our council voted to oppose the application for, for the girls' camp and conference center. So, we're with Pogus Park.
Thank you very much. Now, at this point, it is... Okay. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, board members. The one thing that struck me with the applicant's board that was brought up was the word "small." There was small conference center, small stage, small speakers. I live in Ferncroft in Southdown, which is, we're tucked back by Long Bay. We butt Long Bay. And I've been there two and a half years full-time. I've been there six and a half years, you know, when I purchased my property. First, July, we had a cookout and we were outside and we could hear, I know everybody's brought the Margate up, but we're quite a ways away from the, the Margate. And you could hear the people talking. You could hear the, my sister actually said, "Well, somebody must be having a house, a party, a couple of houses from you." I said, "No, that's the Margate." So, I can just imagine what the noise level's going to be on that, you know, from Big Island to Southdown. Because we're in close proximity also, you know? But the word "small" struck me because nobody mentioned it. But there's no such thing as a small speaker when you're coming on an island like that because the DJs use small speakers, so to speak. And they're loud, you know? So, I can just imagine the impact that that will create for Southdown and Pogus Park, you know? So, thank you for letting me speak. Thank you.
Thank you. Name? Oh, sir.
Read your name. Oh, I'm, I'm John. Sorry. Do you have an address for that dude?
Do you have a time or no?
16 Friendly.
You got two minutes.
Okay. I'm Tim, Scott's brother. Appreciate you moving forward the meeting with the letter. I, I just feel bad for Scott sometimes because I feel, we both grew up in Guilford, in Guilford Village. Went to school from kindergarten through 12th grade at Guilford. And it's true that Scott moved to Texas and he's done well, but he still comes back to the area every summer. And really, the genesis behind this is not the nefarious plots that some of our neighbors seem to think it is. You know, he, he's a single dad with a, with a seven-year-old daughter. She goes to a private school and at that, at that school, they do a lot of scholarships and give a lot of giving back to the community. And that was kind of the genesis behind this. He said, "I want to give back to this community. There's not enough opportunities for young girls." He's spent almost $2 million on this already of his own money. And to get this done, it's going to cost probably $2 million. So, from a businessperson's perspective, this is not an investment. There's no nefarious plan to turn this into a money-making opportunity. This is all about giving back to the community. And I, and I feel bad for him because I think sometimes he's taking the shots when he's really trying to do something well for the, for our community. And at the end of the day, whether this goes forward or doesn't go forward, we, I live on Pogus Park Road. I have to still get along with our neighbors and I respect their, their opinions and we can agree to disagree. But that's the main point I want to get across is there's really no, you know, nefarious things going on here. And in terms of, you know, the development through this project is, you know, we've worked with different engineering firms. We've met with a number of folks at the Loon Preservation Society. I mean, I'm on the Board of Directors of the Humane Society. We are huge animal advocates. In terms of the loons, we'd be willing to open the camp a couple of weeks later if that may, allowed them to nest correctly. We want to work with the Loon Preservation Society. We want to work with the community. We want to work with the community down the noise. Any other concerns, we want to work with the community. So, I'm hoping that you, you give us a positive ruling and I appreciate your time.
Okay. With that, we're going to stop for the night. We're going to, I make a motion that we continue this to our next monthly meeting. And we continue at the same point we leave off.
I just have a question. Will that be first on the agenda?
Uh... Yes, so it's an open hearing.
Yes, first.
It'll be first.
I'll second that.
Okay. Motion to continue. All those in favor? Aye. So, we'll not make no anything done. Meeting has been moved to continue to the next meeting. Do we have any other business before the board?
Will we adjourn?
I'll second that.
Okay. Motion to adjourn. All those in favor? Aye. We're adjourning for the night. Thank you.
Thank you.